Call to meeting, door order, roll call please.
Mayor Rankin.
You here?
Vice Mayor Walther.
Here.
Councilmember Willis.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember McGee.
Yeah.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the great struggle for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This is our first call to the public, first time we've had this many public in a long time. It's for public comment on issues within jurisdiction of town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism, if any, may by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, we cannot, as the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during open call to the public unless the matters are properly noted for discussion legal actions. There are speaker forums in the back, and I'm going to, right off the bat, I've got one, so if anybody else wants to do it, there's the forums back there. And Richard, I'm sorry, but I can't pronounce your last name, I can't read you right. Richard W.
Honorable Mayor, council members, Richard Waggoner.
Oh, Waggoner.
My apologies.
Okay, now I see it.
You, I was with the understanding that this Anthem community is good for the town of Florence with the monies and this type of thing that you keep talking about. I was somewhat surprised where the call to the public today says, "Individual council members may respond to criticism." Well, I think maybe you ought to churn, change the wording just a little bit on that to be a little more friendly. But that's not why I'm up here. I'm up here because I'm inquiring in the budget whether you've got a five-year plan or whatever that may be. There's 12 and a half, 13-foot driving strips on this broken-down Hunt Highway. What are you going to do with it?
The, uh, we'll have a staff member after the meeting get with you and tell you what's going on. We can't comment on that because it's not on our agenda, I'm sorry.
The only reason I brought it up is because in the call from Polte, it mentioned budget questions.
Yeah, and at that time, we'll get into that. You'll find that I, a little bit different, because if there's some questions that are asked during the presentation, if you raise your hand, I will respond to you. Does anybody else in the members of the public have anything they'd like to ask about it? If you do, please come forward at this time, state your name for the record. Seeing none, I'll call, I'll close, call to the public. Need a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One Board.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District Number One Board. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Roll call, please.
The clerk has done a silent roll call. At this time, we'll move on to new business, and I will ask the council to come off of the stage and to take your seat in the audience for a presentation by Mark Reader with Stifel Nicholas on the Community Facilities District.
Testy. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening. My name is Mark Reader, and as mentioned, I'm with Stifel Nicholas, and we have been retained by the district to be the bond underwriter in connection with a couple of forthcoming, um, sales of bonds for District Number One and Number Two. Wanted to take this opportunity to, um, spend a little more time on a PowerPoint presentation which we titled Land Secured Finance Education Series. What I might do, rather than I might turn my back to everybody, I'll just go ahead and talk up here so I can also speak to the residents of the community. Um, let me start over, Mark Reader with Stifel Nicholas, and we've been involved with the CFDs out here, really up date back all the way out, probably to 2002 and 2003 when they were initially being formed, so wanted to thank the town and the community for inviting us out. The purpose of this session is educational and informative. We've probably had this study session with city council four or five times, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. And we had a town hall or a study session out here, I think about two or three months ago, I recognize a few people. So if this is your first time, we welcome you, and again, the purpose of our presentation this evening is to educate you and answer all of your questions as it relates to CFDs. I think the presentation's only going to last about 10 minutes. My colleague Erica Coombs in a moment is going to help me participate in the PowerPoint presentation relative to some property tax information that I think you will find very, very useful. Um, basically, as I mentioned, the goals here is to educate and inform. Um, the CFDs are very interesting political subdivisions. They are a living, breathing political subdivision formed by the Town of Florence City Council back in 2005, under Arizona state law. The CFDs, the Board of Directors, is the town council, in your case, over here to our right, as you're aware, so they govern decisions relative to CFDs. CFDs are pretty powerful political subdivisions that have the powers, under Arizona law, to issue bonds to finance public infrastructure, which is really what we're doing here. And, um, so there's two types of bonds I'm going to focus on tonight that really impact you, and will probably be, uh, what you're interested in learning more about. Uh, and the first one is general obligation bonds that we're going to focus on. General obligation bonds are bonds issued by each CFD, District Number One and District Number Two. Bonds that are repaid from secondary property taxes, very similar to our school bonds that are voted in out there, the community college bonds. Town of Florence does not have any of these types of bonds. Uh, Penal County does not have general obligation bonds. So your district has the authority to issue general obligation bonds, which they have issued. Bonds are repaid from a secondary property tax, the amount of which is in total $3.55, okay? $3.25 for debt service, and 30 cents per $100 of assessed value for a maintenance and operation levy collected to assist with the maintenance of our regional public infrastructure. So you'll see on your tax bill, and Erica's going to go over this with you in a moment, two separate line items for your CFD. $3.25 per 100 to pay debt service on the bonds that are issued to finance the public infrastructure and the 30 cent levy, okay? Now, just to give you a reminder, how much you pay in property taxes is a function of two things, what the tax rate is, then 355 for 10 years, and what the value of your home is. So based on the real estate value that the county assessor has, and Erica's going to go through this in a moment, and the property tax rate. Now, remember, when you go onto your website and look at your property taxes, the CFD is only one political subdivision in which you pay taxes, as you're all aware. Community College, Florence Unified School District, Penal County, et cetera, Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District. So you have a wide variety of property tax rates on your tax bill. We're going to focus this evening, for the most part, on just what it, how it relates to your CFD, uh, within CFD Number One, Number Two, okay? And the other bond we're going to focus on here momentarily is a special assessment bond, and all of this was developed way back in 2004 and 2005, when Polte approached the town, uh, requesting the formation of a community facilities district to assist them in financing the enhanced public infrastructure that you have in your community. And so the development agreement way, way back in 2004, 2005, calls for the tax rate, the 355 that I mentioned to you, and also created a financing in which there would be a $3,500 per lot, resident, per residential lot assessment that would be used to finance some of the in-track public infrastructure. So every lot out here, from way back when going forward, is expected to have that $3,500 fixed, $3,500 assessment, okay? Now, assessment bonds are different than general obligation bonds. It's not based on value, and it's not based on tax rates. Real simple math, you all have $3,500. We issue bonds, you pay for it over 20, 25 years, or in some cases, some people elect to pay it off, which you can do with a special assessment bonds, okay? So I wanted to start the conversation, just sharing with you kind of what the overall plan of finance has been dating back to 2005, what the secondary tax rate is for the general obligation bonds, and the special assessment bond, and the difference between the two. Um, there's a nice aerial photograph of Anthem, Merrill Ranch. You can see in the blue here, this is District Number One, much larger district than District Number Two, down in here, and we're somewhere like right in here. So just wanted to kind of share with you, uh, the size and magnitude of your two districts, especially District Number One, which will likely be built out for, you know, really, really many, many years to come. This is the, uh, over here is the Cerus situation, copper mine situation right over here, which has been carved out of the district because it was state land when it was formed way back in 2005, okay? Uh, we just wanted to share here kind of what's been going on. In District Number One, it's almost 8,000 acres, the blue line, about 8,790 acres, and it's master planned for over 30,000 residential units. And so obviously, there's a lot of building that's going to hopefully occur over the years, which will be a benefit to you all, because to the extent we can get future development and growth and tax base, then more things can be done in terms of the public infrastructure. About 1,100 homes have been sold in District Number One, to give you kind of an idea where we stand. I think Polte will tell you, they're selling about 200 homes a year. They would like that to be 600, I'm sure, if you ask, uh, Polte and Randy over here with Polte is here, but right now, I think they're selling 200, 225 a year. District Number Two's the smaller district. It's about 1,060 acres, 3,100 are planned, and we have about 1,100 completed. Interestingly enough, CFD One and CFD Two both have about 1,100 residential homes. Kind of interesting how the math worked out 10 years later, okay? And then, um, as you may have heard, 4,240 acres within District Number One, coming back to here, was recently purchased by another real estate investor by the name of Southwest Value Partners. And so they're going to be a part of this district going forward, and the town is in, has entered into discussions and negotiations with them. Um, on this page here, on page number eight, we talked about this, the, um, the GEO tax at 355, and Erica's going to get in and talk to you about what that means to you from a monthly and an annual cost. On the special assessment bond, it's about $25 a month for those of you who don't pay it off in cash. And then Erica's going to give you an idea here shortly on a slide, kind of what you're paying in property taxes to support your general obligation bond side of the equation, okay? Then, two and three, I think, are really important to you all, and I'm going to go to this slide here. The general obligation bond money is used to finance what's what we call regional public infrastructure, and that's in the town's CFD policies and procedures. So the GEO bond money is used for regional type of projects, which I'll get into here in a moment, versus the special assessments, which are in-track, associated with your specific lot, okay? And the town, in putting that policy together, thought that was more fair and equitable from a properties tax standpoint, since all of you will benefit from the regional public infrastructure, and all of you will pay a, for the most part, the same, same type of taxes depending upon the value of your home, but in general, you know, reasonably close. So what is the regional public infrastructure? We put this slide together, and we went back over the years, way back to 2008, all the way to 2016. Uh, there's been about, there's going to be about $10 million in bonds sold when we do this next bond sale, so call it roughly around $10 million in general obligation, regional public infrastructure bonds, and the question is, where did that money go? And what are you paying for? And in this column right here, uh, and you recognize a lot of these roads, um, and most of this public infrastructure, by the way, has been put in the ground by Polte. So Polte has made a substantial investment in Merrill Ranch, I want to say probably north of $200 million in infrastructure for the development, and, uh, the bond money has been used so far to reimburse Polte for that public infrastructure development for these projects. Merrill Ranch Parkway, American Way, Constitutional Way, Felix Road, Independence Way, Sun City Boulevard, Anthem. Uh, Hunt Highway, there's been some improvements on Hunt Way, Merrill Ranch Parkway again on the 2000. We get a regional fire station down here, a very nice fire station for your community that was also financed with our general obligation regional dollars. I'm sorry? With police substation, thank you. Sorry, I didn't remember that one. And then, um, down here, uh, Merrill Ranch Parkway again, Hunt Highway, and then the one that the CFD board's going to consider tonight, uh, after this presentation, after we answer your questions, the CFD board tonight will take action to approve another, not to exceed about $2 million in general obligation bonds, and that money will be used to reimburse for Hunt Highway and American Way, okay? So we wanted to kind of give you an idea of how the bond money is being spent, um, by type of bond issue, and then down below here, the in-tracks are streets, streets, curb gutters, and storm drainage, okay? So that, uh, that kind of concludes my 10-minute version of, of the CFD. We went kind of quick there. I'm here to help and answer any questions that you have. What I want to do now is turn it over to my colleague Erica, and she's going to talk to you a little bit about taxes, something near and dear to all of our hearts, and walk you through some, some information on some slides that we think will be helpful. Thank you.
Good evening. The next few slides are, will be reference for you, and, um, I think we've got a few hard copies of the presentation as well, but we're providing you information on where to find information on your particular property. And, um, so the way to do this would be to visit the, oh, I think I, there we go, to visit the Penal County Assessor's website, and you can search for the property information by either name or address. And so in this example, we pulled up a parcel which we blocked out, and what you would want to do is down here where it's got the parcel number, it says taxing information. So if you click on that link, it's going to provide you a number of information, including your tax bill. And what I want to point out is, starting this year, all taxes are based off one property value. So even though you may have seen primary taxes and secondary taxes in the past, they were based on two different property values, but starting this year, um, due to Prop 117, everything's based off one property tax. And so what you would want to look for is your limited property value. So you can see in this example, this is for 2016-17, but the tax bill information I'm going to show you is for 2015-16, but this property value for 2016-17 right now is estimated to be approximately $21,533. And if we're, all homes are, have a 10%, that's what the class ratio is, so if we're looking at a value, that would be $215,330. So your tax value is different than what you would go sell your home value for, and it's determined by the assessor. Uh, so now we've gone to, this would be that next screen, if you had clicked on that, um, taxing information link, you would be prompted to, um, go to the, you're now being transferred over to the treasurer's website. And to find out your, um, your actual tax bill information, you can see here, it's got tax years, and multiple years are listed, so in this example, we would have clicked on this bill from 2015. And so this would get, give you your actual property value, and as Mark described, there's a number of jurisdictions within, uh, within, with, on your tax bill, so you can see the county here, I know it's hard to read, uh, the school district here, the, um, community college districts here, we've got the county library district, uh, county collect control, and then right here, we've circled, in this example, this would be for Merrill Ranch CFD Number One, but they both have the same tax rate, so you can see, um, and it's very hard to see here, but we've got 30 cents for the operation and maintenance, and then $3.25 for that debt service. Um, so what you would do here, and this was for the prior year example, this home value was 190, I can't read this exactly, but 196,000, or 195,310. So then we're going to remember that it's, um, 10% for our home class ratio, so then we're going to, for our actual tax bill, it's $3.25 in this example for the debt service per $100 of net limited assessed value. So for the formula, you would find your home, your net limited value, and then you would times that by the tax rate and divide that by 100, and that's because it's, uh, per $100 of that assessed valuation. And in the, in this example, for the actual property tax portion of CFD Number One on this tax bill, it's approximately $635. Um, so just to give you an idea, if we looked at what the average home value is for Merrill Ranch CFD Number Two, in 2015-16, that value was approximately $115, and, $115, let's just say, and then in 16-17, you could see it's increased, so the average home, and this is owner occupied, would be approximately 122,000. Uh, so in 15-16, if we were looking on a monthly basis, it would be approximately $34 a month for the total amount of taxes you would pay for in this particular, let's say Merrill Ranch CFD Number Two. And so that equates to approximately $410 a year for the average homeowner within Merrill Ranch CFD Number Two. Are there questions? Yeah.
Uh, just to clarify for myself and anyone else, if we have paid off our 3,500, we don't, we don't have any of this, is that true? We might have the, uh, M&amp;O, or whatever it was.
You, you would still have the general obligation debt service and the operation and maintenance tax, but you wouldn't have the special assessment tax, which I don't have on this particular tax bill. I did not bring that up in the presentation, but that, there are two separate taxes.
Well, okay, so explain what debt service is, then. I don't understand that.
Um, so general obligation, that's related-
No, no, the CFD, you, right on, right on top of your, CFD debt service.
Yeah, debt service. Um, so the general obligation bonds that are issued, it's, um, basically almost like an IOU, and there's a debt obligation, so we're providing the jurisdiction, in this case Merrill Ranch CFD Number Two, an upfront sum of money, and then that, that's paid back over a period of time.
Okay, but if I've paid off my 3,500, why am I still getting debt service for that?
That is for the special assessment, and that is only for your lot, and that's for the general obligation bonds, it's regional infrastructure that's being paid for, and so it's not something that you can pay off early. Um, the debt works tired as, on a basis for the whole community or that jurisdiction at one time.
So why are they both called CFD? That's, it's confusing.
They're both related to the community facilities districts. It's two different types of debt. An example would be if a city or town issued excise tax debt, so that's sales tax revenue debt, or they might issue general obligation bond debt. So those bonds are repaid by a specific security, and that security may be different. And so in-
Yeah. Okay, one, one second. Okay. So let's stick with, um, the debt service question. I want to make sure everybody's clear on this, okay? Yes, sir. Whoa. Right. It's a long build-out. Okay, let me, let me, let me see if I can answer some of your questions, okay? All right. So, remember, in, in 2005, the district was formed, okay? Polte put a couple hundred million dollars in the ground to build, to build public infrastructure, and call it enhanced public infrastructure for the great amenities that you guys have in your community, okay? No, this, no, the golf course isn't in any of the taxes and all that, that's, that's all outside, that's, that's all, the HOA, we're just talking about public infrastructure, not talking about golf courses and all that. Okay, so... Okay. There's been a $3.25 tax rate for 10 years. And the, the plan is that there will be a $3.25 tax rate for the regional public infrastructure component of this development for the next 10, 12, 15 years as it gets built out, okay? Did you want to say something, Mayor?
Let Mark explain how what questions have been asked. Let's hold up any more questions to Mark and explain out to you. And if you have the questions after he explains it, then that's the time to do it. Let him go first, and let's, let's see if we can straighten this up before we get into-
Yeah, thank you. So I'm trying to slow this down, and- So I'm trying to slow this down, and we're here to be transparent, as you all know. So, again, the secondary tax rate is $3.25. Everybody with me on that? It's been that way for 10 years, and the expectations are it's going to continue to be that way, okay? It's not going to 350, it's not going to 375, it's not going to $3.90, okay? As the district grows in value, tax-based value, and I want to say you grew about 5% this year, okay, which is good news, meaning the property values are increasing a little bit each year, okay? Depending upon where you're at, there is new development occurring, okay? Every day, there's new development occurring, and your tax base is growing each year, not by significant margins, but it's growing, okay? When your tax base grows, we have, the district has little revenue, additional revenue, in which to sell additional bonds. So every year, we have this conversation, every year during the budget season, which we're entering into, we calculate what the tax base is within the boundaries of District number one and District number two, okay? It grew a little bit, we have $3.25 tax rate, so the district will issue a few more bonds to, again, maintain the $3.25 tax rate, okay? Whenever we sell bonds, and as I mentioned to you earlier, we're going to sell about $2 million in District number two here shortly, that money then reimburses Pulte, who then puts that money back into the development to continue the development over the next X number of years. So that is the way the mechanism, the financing plan has worked, and was disclosed to all buyers when they purchased a new home out here in Anthem. So, the debt service, brand new, so hear me out. So those people who buy a brand-new home in Anthem, they are required to sign a disclosure form that they are aware of the $3.25, and they are aware of the $3,500 special assessment, okay? So that, we have all those records, and that's being done. So that just discloses the financing plan associated with the development. The purpose of the financing plan is to help finance some of the public infrastructure and some of the improvements out there, okay? So somebody had a question on debt service. I think it's going to be $475,000 a year in District number two, and the tax rate is then levied sufficient to pay the $475,000 in debt service for the general obligation bonds. Okay, so let me stop there. Was that, did I help clarify that a little bit? Yes, sir?
Still see the same information on your tax bill. It's just, the difference would be, when we're looking at how the county assessor provides us information, they, to get the average home value, we look at the number of parcels in that class, and class three is the owner occupied, and we divide that by the total assessed value for that piece of the pie. So there's commercial, there's agriculture vacant, there's owner occupied, and, but if you were for a rental property, the tax bill would still, the owner of that property would still see the same sort of tax bill. The difference would be there's a state aid credit for if you are the homeowner, and if you, if a homeowner owns more than one property in Arizona, they're only going to get that tax rate on their, on their property that they're living in.
So you do have some rented residential out here, and it's valued a little bit differently at the county assessor. So when you go onto the website, you'll see the value of that rented property versus an owner-occupied residential unit. Okay. And again, you know, the Arizona property tax system, and I know we have a lot of people out here from other states, but as you can already tell, Arizona's always voted as having the most complicated property tax system in the country. I mean, very, very, I thought Erica did a good job. If you go to your value, okay, your limited value, then you can figure it out each year pretty easily through those calculations. Okay. So general obligation bonds, debt service, tax rates, are we good? I want to go to special assessments in a moment. Was that helpful to everybody? Yes, Brent?
Mark, I think it'd be helpful to explain to folks who don't know what a general obligation bond is, what it is. And I think it's important to simplify that even further to say, consider it a loan, like taking out the loan to buy your house. That infrastructure was paid for by the developer. When you bought it, you're buying into the value of what it costs to build that house and a little bit of profit margin for that developer. And when we talk about debt service, we're talking about the interest on that loan. So I don't want to make it more complicated than it needs to be. There's a loan, essentially, and then there's the interest that you pay on the loan, just like your home loan on your house unless you bought it for cash. The other thing that I don't think we've defined very well is what a CFD is. It's a community facility district. It's a special government under the law in Arizona that has a number of powers, and one of those powers is to be able to sell bonds.
Yeah, thank you. I thought when I talked earlier, it's a living, breathing political subdivision formed by your city council back in 2005, political subdivision, kind of like a town, but a political subdivision within the boundaries of the town, the board of directors, of which has the powers, if you will, the authority to issue bonds to finance public infrastructure. And bonds, thank you, Brent, for that. Sometimes we make an assumption, but a bond is a loan. It's just a little bit different. We go out and sell bonds to investors instead of a loan. We go out and sell bonds to investors. They believe in the project, they earn tax-free interest, okay? And those investors are paid back over time at a $3.25, out of the $3.25 tax rate. So it's just a loan, and we're raising money and using that money to reimburse Pulte for the public infrastructure that they put in the ground to build the amenities out there. Okay, better? Okay.
One other thing that I would be thinking in my mind if I was in the audience tonight is the fact that the projects are identified is not arbitrary and capricious. There were projects identified in 2005 when the CFD was set up, types of projects identified, and those projects were always intended to be implemented over time and didn't pertain just to the streets around this building. They pertain to all the development that was likely to occur in the entire area identified as the community facilities district. There's a specific type of project, there are specific projects that then have been identified, and to your point, Mark, Pulte has invested millions of dollars in building those projects that were identified with the understanding that, just like when we buy our individual houses, there's understanding that the house is going to be completed, the tile's going to be in, the appliances are going to be there, the lights are going to work when we move in, and then we're paying them back over time, in my case, with a 20-year loan on my house, to get those improvements that are done. The same thing has occurred with respect to the CFD. Millions of dollars have been invested to build the house with the expectation that that house is going to be workable when we move in. The only difference is, this house is a really big house that will continue to be completed and wings added to it as we go forward because there will be a number of tenants that live in that house.
Yes, sir?
Yeah, the rate, 3.25 is the rate.
Yes.
We get that. And you also explained, and we all know, that over time, property value did increase. So the point is, or the concern that I have personally, and I think a lot of folks here, is that as the property values go up, the rate remains the same, 3.25, but times a higher value. So at the end of the day, we're paying more dollars at the end of the year for taxes. That's what we're concerned about. We're on all fixed incomes here because we're retired.
Right.
So that's the issue that I'm worried about. I mean, it's nice to see property values go up in the real sense, but the taxable rate will go up. 3.25 stays the same, but the dollars at the end of the year are higher.
Yeah, good point, and we talked about that earlier. The amount of taxes you pay will be based on the value of your property, right, and the tax rate. So each year, property's revalued, and the good thing about that is Proposition 117 was a new property tax initiative last year that maybe some of you may have heard about. It's created additional complications in our world, and on that front, the state limits the amount of your property going up by 5%, no more than 5% per year. So if there's a 5% increase in the value of your property and the tax rate stays the same, you're right, you're going to pay, you're going to pay a little more property taxes. That's the nature of the general obligation taxing mechanism. Yeah.
As the area develops, there's more homes, more tax base, so we would expect to see our dollars, or that rate maybe, the 3.25, to go down, whatever it takes to reduce our tax liability and still have the amenities that we want.
If we didn't issue any more bonds, you're exactly right, okay? But each year, based on that additional revenue stream from the growth, the anticipation based on the original, you know, development agreement and financing plan is that bonds would be issued to the extent there's some additional revenue associated with the tax base growth. Yes, sir?
Our Merrill Ranch thing?
Yeah.
Why doesn't it show that the eastern highway was given to Southwest Partners? And south of Parkside was given to the swap with Pulte. In other words, you're changing the CFD areas with different owners and stuff, so we're paying for area that changes the planning and development, number one. Number two, when you're talking about the amount of money that we're paying, 3.25, now tack on 200, and what is it, 200 and change for the college district, now tack on what the town charges us. Everybody else in town pays about $1.11 per 100. Those with the story homes, 200 a year. It's not fair for us. The town built a water park, we've got a water park that we pay for. So we've got to, can't we just say that we're not going to pay anymore from the city? If the city does, they can do whatever they want. We have a CFD that takes care of our neighborhood. My street, I may never use, and this mayor, we've had this discussion before.
Right, Bruce, and let me stop right there and let me tell you something. You're a member of Florence. You're not a member of...
Not anymore.
Okay, fine, that's great. You're all citizens of Florence, Arizona.
I didn't want the water park, and yet, a million three is what we're in the hole right now with our town.
Well, Bruce...
Who's going to pay for it?
That was a decision made by the council at the time to do that, and if you don't like that, Bruce, the whole thing, you've got two options.
Vote you out.
Vote me out.
Not give the 15 million dollars.
Vote the whole council out that voted for it, or move.
No, 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 no. You're telling me to move, and yet, you know what? This is democracy. You can't tell me to move, Mr. Mayor. I know you didn't fight in any battle, we're not...
Bruce, I agree. Bruce, we're not going to be able to say anything to satisfy you tonight.
No, 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 I'm just trying to get questions here answered, and you're doing a...
You know, when my dad, when my dad, we're going to take a break here for just a minute, folks, but when my mom and dad bought their home in Florence back in the 60s, they paid X amount of dollars. Everything was included in the price of that home, and they paid interest on that loan for the infrastructure put in by the developer on the loan. We have changed financing in Arizona. You can go to almost any community, and you're going to find community facility districts. It's a way of doing business now. It's not like back in the old days when you, when my mom and dad bought that house in the 60s, I think they paid 35,000, three-bedroom block home. And that included the roads, that included the water into it, so it was all there. Nowadays, they don't do it that way. If they tried to sell you a home and put the cost of the infrastructure on the original price that you're buying, you couldn't afford it. You couldn't get cleared for it, it'd be too high. This way, we can spread it out. And let's take about a five-minute break. Okay, if we could all get our seats, please? Mr. Reader, you ready?
Members of the audience, thanks for coming tonight. As, I think I was introduced earlier, I'm Brent, I'm the town manager of Florence. We're running up against some time issues, so we're going to recommend to our bond attorney and our bond folks that we move forward with the public hearings right now. Now, that's moving forward from an administrative perspective. Now, I think this is the better news. I'm going to make sure that we stay after the meeting, that our bond attorney stays after the meeting, that our financial advisors stay after the meeting, and we're going to go to the back, there's some tables in the back, and we'd be glad to sit down with everybody individually and do our best to answer questions, but we have a meeting that we need to complete and we're behind schedule, and I think it's easier if the staff and our paid-for consultants and assistants in this process stay after the meeting so that we don't interrupt the public process and moving through the other items on tonight's agenda. So I hope you understand.
Back in session, on new business, item two.
Item two, hold a public hearing on a feasibility report on the feasibility and benefit of certain projects to be financed with the proceeds and the sale of special assessment bonds of Merrill Ranch Community Facility District number one.
You want to open the public hearing, is what you're saying? Okay, at this time, we will open the public hearing. All members of the public that would like to speak, please come up to the microphone, state your name and what community you live in. You don't have to give a street address, but if you want to comment on it, now's the time to do it. And there is a three-minute timer. This time, the public hearing is open. Go forward, sir.
Dan Huer, Sun City. Do you need more information now? Okay. You're asking us to report the feasibility benefits of certain projects. I guess my question is, what are those projects? I don't know what you're going to be voting on.
Okay, we're on, are you on the CFD?
This was your point two on new business. That's what you just read. Hold a public hearing on the feasibility report, right here.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public, I believe what's being referred to was slide number nine of the presentation, which spoke to specifically Series 2016 or District number two, for selling bonds for $2 million, and that was to pay for improvements on Highway in American Way.
Okay, that's not on CFD one, right?
That's CFD two.
Yeah, we're on, we're on CFD one at this time. Mark, why don't you go ahead and help?
No problem. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This item in front of us for the public hearing relates to Merrill Ranch Community Facilities District number one, special assessment bond. 282 lots, times $3,500 per lot, is a special assessment bond of $987,000, $3,500 per lot, as we talked about in the study session, purpose of which would be to pave and construct curb and gutter and sidewalks in units 50 and 53. So that's the primary purpose of storm drainage, I think, as well. So, yeah, it's just, it's...
Can you clarify, for the county, out of, directly out of the feasibility report? The engineering plans associated with storm grain sidewalks and curb and gutter, as well as paving, that was 1,800 linear feet of storm grain, that was 41,160 square yards of paving, that is 24,196 linear feet of curb and gutter, and 72,480 square feet of sidewalk.
And your question was on CFD number two, I think. One of his questions mainly related, is that the one you're asking about? Did he answer your question? Did he answer your question? You've still got three minutes. Would like, the reason we're getting everybody on tape is it will be replayed over co-communication.
Dan Hure, yeah. That doesn't tell me, I don't know what those are. Units, mentioned unit 50 and something. I don't even know where that's at, or if it's down in Florence, or Old Florence, or I don't know.
Mark?
We're gonna let, what I, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'll ask Randy from Polk to come up. As mentioned, Polk is developing each phase out here, and, you know, 50 to 100 lot phases. This is lot units 50 and 53, the specific location. I'm gonna ask Randy from Polk to come up and share with the group here, what's the specific location.
I'm Randy Christman, Polk Homes. Unit 50 is at Merrill Ranch Parkway, Felix Road, that's at the intersection there on the northwest corner. And then, unit 50 is in Parkside, or 53, excuse me, is in Parkside, Constitution Way and Anthem Way, right there, that intersection. So, cars is over building right now.
Again, from the comment, the, the community facility district has nothing to do with the property outside of what Harrison Merrill purchased back in 2004. Both community facility districts are strictly here in the Anthem area, that's where this- Any other comment? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing.
Item three, motion to adopt resolution number MRCFD One, 132 dash 16, which is part authorizes the execution of certain document approved of feasibility reports and approve the assessment diagram and methods of assessment for the assessment of Area Eight.
We've had our public hearing, we've had our work sessions over the eight. This time, we need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number MRCFD One, 132 dash 06. All second?
Here we'll fix on my paper here, it says 1-6.
It's 1-6. Pardon me, I'll correct that, 1-6.
We have, and we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve MRCFD One, 132 dash 1-6. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Item four, motion to adopt resolution number MRCFD One, 133-16, which is part authorizes a private placement and issuance of not to exceed 987,000 aggregate principal amounts of special assessment bonds, Series 2016 and related matters.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution number MRCFD One, 133-gash 1-6.
We have a motion and a second to approve MRCFD One, 133-dash 1-6. Any other discussion? Mark, which I, the question we brought up during the last break of why cannot citizens of the district buy the bonds? Can you explain how the sales goes?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I keep referring you to Mr. Mayor, but as the board chairman. Excellent question, and we have two bond sales forthcoming. We're addressing District Number One at the moment, the special assessment bonds, and we're going to be addressing here shortly the general obligation bonds. And we, if there is interest in the community, and I was actually talking to somebody about this earlier, we would most certainly allow the residents of the community the opportunity to look at purchasing the bonds should they desire so. So, we can set up some advertisements, and some coffee clutches, and some presentations out here on site. If anybody in the community has an interest, we will make it a priority to sell bonds to those individuals who may have an interest in, in according. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have a motion and a second? Any other discussion? Yeah, I'll call for a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Motion carries. Hold it, concern for Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number One Board. Any other discussion?
Hearing none, I'll call for a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passed.
Motion for John from Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Two Board. Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn to Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two Board. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Dispense of the roll call, we're all still here.
Item B1, under new business. Hold a public hearing on a feasibility report and the feasibility and benefits of certain projects to be financed with the proceeds of sale of general obligation bonds of Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two.
This time, I'll open the public hearing on the feasibility report from, for Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two. Any member of the public that has any questions, please come forward to the podium, state
Dan Hure, Sun City. I guess the same question as I had before, what is this money gonna be spent on? This is another CFD Number Two, and, you know, what, what is it gonna do?
Mr. Mayor, if I have the ability to answer that question, that would be, if you're following along, council members, page 21, in tab D in your book, and that actually shows a description and estimate of the cost for public infrastructure for all of the various bond sales, including 2016. And as mentioned in, in page nine of the slide presentation, specifically, this is for Hunt Highway Phase One and American Way.
Okay, you wanna explain where Hunt Highway Phase One is?
I do not know that.
I guess what the question was, where are we at?
Well, I have to refer to our friends from Polk to tell us about that.
He's looking.
I think I can answer both of those questions, though, because I talked to Mark about it. We've had conversations. We're actually paying Polk back for the development of Hunt Highway and American Way. So, this whole bond issue was passed with, you know, 2005, and, you know, we signed this contract with Merrill to fund all these streets out here. Now, you know, being a resident here, you know, I, I had questions about it, I've gone through it several times now. Mark explained it to me at least six times, but, you know, this, this contract, that, you know, the town is obligated to fund all the development out here for the whole CFD district, which includes the land that's southwest of. So, yeah, if you look at that map, the CFD for the land is not for Polk, it's for the land, right, Mark?
Well, the, the CFD is, obviously has, you know, the land in it, that has the tax base that you, to, what you just said, reimburse Polk for the public infrastructure. They have invested in the property out here over the last 10 years.
For any other landlord.
Yeah, and any other landlord. But this is specific to Polk in terms of their investment, because they're the only ones that have invested in the public infrastructure. And the proceeds of the, of the issues in front of us this evening is to be reimbursed Polk for Hunt Highway and American Way. Now, Hunt Highway, as it was explained to me, is Phase One of Hunt Highway, which I don't know exactly what Phase One is, but there's an engineering and construction contract in connection there with it.
Go ahead and explain where you're at.
One of the things that I think is important for the public to understand is, these are projects that are already completed, and I think that's clear, but I wanted to explain the process by which these projects are entertained, and what that means going forward. So, as part of developing this project, there was a document called a plat that was approved, called a final plat, and that created the lots, all of your lots that, that everybody purchased to have their house on it, was created by the plat. But as part of that plat, there were engineering plans associated with that, for drainage, for streets, for traffic signals, for signs, for striping, that's all part of that plating and, and the engineering process associated with that. So, once those plans are approved by Polk, obviously designed by a registered engineer in the state of Arizona, they then go on to the CFD Board, and there's an independent district engineer that oversees those improvements, as well as they go to the town, and the town engineer and, and the town development services or community services director, who's actually sitting over there, Mark, as, as well as council, review those improvements and approve of the actual engineering plans of the improvement. Then those projects are bid, and they're constructed, and as part of those projects being bid and constructed based on those plans, the town and the district are both responsible, and certainly Polk is in the same boat, of reviewing and inspecting those improvements, and then they come back again to town council for acceptance of those improvements. And after all of that process takes place, that's when it's applicable for whoever did the improvements, in this case, Polk, to come back to the CFD to sell bonds to be reimbursed for completing those improvements. So, it's a laborious process to go from designing and identifying them to actually constructing them until the time that they get paid back.
Okay, let's explain where, where we're at. Are there any other questions of the community facility district Number Two? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. Any motion?
I make a motion to adopt resolution 230 dash 16.
Hold second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt MRCFD Two, 230 dash 16. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Make a motion to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two Board. Hold second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn from Merrill Ranch Community Facility District Number Two Board. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Item nine, presentations. Presentation of the Chamber of Commerce Business of the Month, Bucksford Style Consignment Shop. Jessica Moore with the Chamber of Commerce will be presenting.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The Business of the Month for March is Bucksford Style Consignment Shop, owned by Kim Elabrock. Since opening its doors in June 2014, Bucksford Style has outgrown its space twice and is now located at 440 North Main Street in the Silver King Hotel. Not only has Kim made Bucksford Style a successful business, she has also given back to the community tremendously by donating clothes to those in need and sponsoring the ugly sweater contest at Christmas on Main. The Florence Chamber is pleased to present this award by naming Bucksford Style the March Business of the Month.
Come forward.
I wanna say thank you, this is beautiful. I don't do well in front of everybody, but I'm gonna turn around and say hi. I'm Kim Elabrock, and I moved to Florence probably about 2003, and worked for the county, was a town employee for a couple of, probably eight years, and was miserable, so I decided I wanted to open up my own shop, and clothing was the deal. So, I'm at 440 North Main Street in the Silver King Hotel. I haven't seen a lot of you in there, so you should come and check it out. Good prices, if you wanna consign items, you get 40% of what it sells for. I have a lot of winter visitors, so if you leave and the money, you haven't collected the money, you can still get it when you come back. But I look forward to seeing you guys, and good luck with your journey that you guys are dealing with, but I just wanna say thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor and Council, the rest of our meeting is presentation, so we would once again invite you off the stage, and we will set up our presentation for our two presentations that we have remaining this evening.
Please don't leave, I have a feeling you'll be riveted by these next two presentations. It's all about entertainment value tonight.
Are we coming back up here?
Who wants to talk budget? All right. Looks like we're, we're ready to go. How many of you in the room watch on the cable station and, and watch the city council meetings every other week? Hey, we got two. Well, hopefully, you're all aware that we are broadcast, channel 20, is that correct? 11, channel 11 on, on the local cable network. You can watch council, myself, the big talking head, every, every other Monday, and sometimes on, on Tuesdays, and learn all about the town business going on. For the two of you that watch those meetings, about a month ago, a presentation was provided to the council, and I'm happy to come back and update that presentation. Earlier, one of the members of the audience said that we all know that the town is $1.3 million in the red in the current fiscal year. Well, that's not correct, but a budget was approved last fiscal year where the town was dipping into their savings for $1.2 million in order to balance the budget. Now, the challenge that I received when I was hired by the town three months ago was, we want you to come in and improve the financial health of the community going forward, and, and help with some ideas on how we might do that, so that we have balanced budgets going forward, and, and that we can really enhance and build trust with all the taxpayers in Florence moving forward. Now, the presentation that occurred a month ago talked about how do we make adjustments in the current year? How can the staff, how can you as the manager, how can we as a council make adjustments to that budget to become more financially healthy? Here's the 1.2 million I was talking about. A month ago, I came before council, and the challenge that I had at that time was that we were going to reduce that 1.2 million deficit by a half a million dollars. And I told council, this is a target, it's not a promise, but I'm confident that we will be able to reduce that deficit in the current fiscal year by a half a million dollars. And, and a very nice article was written by Mark, I saw Mark earlier, a very nice article was, was written by Mark and, and put in the local paper at that time. Just so that everybody in the room who doesn't watch on cable channel 11 understands, this is a trend analysis of the general fund, the unrestricted funds that the town of Florence has, and how it has operated since 2010- has, and how it has operated since 2010 to 2016. I'm colorblind, but I will do the best that I can here. I think the line that is gray up there, I think it actually was blue originally, that's the revenues, that's the money brought in by the town on an annual basis. And then, the line that is black is what we have spent. And you'll see that it's an inverse relationship in the last two and a half years as to how much has been spent versus how much has been received, and council has given me the challenge to try and make that relationship more directly correlating instead of inverse. How are we doing that? Reducing expenditures, trying to generate additional revenue, changing the way we do business as a town, and that's how we get to the budget target. So in the last month, staff, our budget committee, which is made up of two of our council members, we've worked very hard to continue to make adjustments to try and continue to reduce that $1.2 million deficit. So since that time, we've dissolved the internal service funds, we've updated our projections, and at our last regularly scheduled council meeting, we made an actual adjustment to the way that the town does business in terms of what we do with our food tax revenues when they come in to the town. And I think all the staff is happy to present to the council, to the public, that we have updated the budget target. It's no longer a half a million dollars, it's now $800,000. And what I hope occurs is as we continue, we're almost seventy-five percent through the fiscal year, as we get closer to that hundred percent of the fiscal year, which is June 30th, I hope to continue to update this target. In a perfect world, and I'm not sure we'll get there, but wouldn't it be great if we were able to erase that $1.2 million deficit going into the next fiscal year? And not only is it important, the more of a dent that we can make in this, the more it helps us going into our budget adoption for the next fiscal year. So the second part of this presentation is, please participate in the budget process. Please attend the meetings, please observe the meetings, please get your comments to the city council as we go through this budget process, which is fixing to start in the next couple of weeks. Many thanks go out to the staff, to our finance director, Gabe, who's sitting here in front of me, and to the budget committee for all of their help throughout this process and getting to this point. And that's it for that presentation unless anybody has any questions. All right. I think everybody's familiar, there's been a lot of outreach. I have given this presentation, I think this is the fifth time now, so I apologize to any of you. Mark from the paper has heard it five times, I think, the council's heard it four times of five times. I apologize if you've heard the presentation before, but the message is important. There are elections forthcoming that really affect the way the town of Florence is able to do business. It's important for me to point out, as a town employee in the state of Arizona, I cannot advocate for how you should vote. I can inform and educate, and so this presentation is intended tonight to inform and educate. Why is this a prominent and important issue? In August of 2014, the town had a very important election. That election was called the Home Rule Option Election. In Arizona, we are a subset of the state of Arizona. The state of Arizona has a constitution that controls the way that cities and towns do business, specifically how we budget our funds. In 1980, there was an amendment to the constitution done giving cities and towns the ability to have local control, to determine how it spends, Florence itself determining how it spends the revenue that it receives. But it requires a vote of the public, and unfortunately, in 2014, the public in Florence voted to not give the town control over how it expends the money that it receives. We're a subdivision of the state, as I said, 1980, the amendment, as I said. The important thing on this slide is, a yes vote, a no vote on home rule does not impact taxes or fees at all. It is an argument of whether the town is able to expend the funds it receives or whether we have to utilize the expenditure limitation, which the base budget from 1979, 1980, moving forward. Because the home rule election failed in 2014, there was a special election that was held last May. How many of you voted in the special election last May? Hey, we got a lot more folks raising their hands. That's great, almost everybody. We're gonna have a very similar election this year, and that's part of this presentation. The public overwhelmingly last year allowed for a base adjustment for the town to expend above the 79-80 expenditure limitation for one year, and that's the year that we're in right now. There are two elections this year. These are very important, and that's why this presentation's being provided. The first election is a special election, which will be May 17th. That is the same as the election last year. That's to allow for one year, this upcoming budget, the ability to exceed the base from 1979-1980. In other words, to give the town local control to determine how it expends the funds that it receives in the next fiscal year. The second election is on August 30th. That is a home rule election, so similar to what I said earlier, the election that failed in 2014, this is the same election, and that would give the town of Florence four years of local control. Not in the next year, but the four years following that. So both elections are very important that you vote. Little more about the May 17 election. Once again, has no merit and no impact on fees or taxes with respect to the town. It's identical to last year's election, and I think from a fiscal conservancy and trust in government perspective, it's important to note, no increases are being proposed over what was approved by the voters last year. Last year, the voters approved exceeding the 79-80 base by $15 million. The town is asking for the same exact thing that we asked the voters for last year, not to build upon that, but to stay the same. This is the specific budget, not budget, this is a specific election language. You notice the $15 million is dead center in the middle of that language. This is what it will say on the ballot when you go to vote, it's Proposition 408, in terms of a yes vote and a no vote. This is a very important slide. You're probably thinking, what will happen if the May election doesn't pass? $15 million is a lot of money. As you can imagine, if we're looking at going back to a 1979-1980 base, who lived in Florence in 1970 and 1980? Where's Tom? One person, maybe two. Were you born then? No? Okay, so that's right. She wasn't here, she was in Texas, or New Mexico, one of the two. Florence was a very different place in 1970 and 1980 versus today, and it's important to understand that. To go back to a cap designated on that fiscal year, Florence would be a very different place. There are a number of things that could be impacted if that were to take place, and they're listed on the screen. What is the town doing to be fiscally responsible and to make sure that we're making best use of the dollars that we receive? Well, a number of things. Projects are being completed, commitments are being taken seriously. As you heard earlier regarding the budget target presentation and the presentation tonight on the update of the budget target, fiscal conservancy is the order of the day, and changing the way we do business, making sure that we utilize best practices, these are all things that aren't just being lip service, they're taking place now and today in City Hall. This is the point where I emphasize to folks, we're starting the budget process for the next fiscal year, kicks off in two meetings from now, correct? And we hope that everyone participates as part of that process. Very important information here, there are three different polling locations. One is at Florence Town Hall in the council chambers, one is at Florence Elementary School, that's in downtown Florence, and the third location is at Anthem Parkside at the community center, that's the closest polling place to everyone that's here. The last day to register to vote is April the 18th, that's a very important date. The publicity pamphlet will be mailed out on April 25th, and keep in mind, May 17th, that's the election, be there or be square. The second election is in August, as we mentioned before, and that's the home rule election. Voters in Florence have approved home rule eight of nine times since it's come up. The town has retained local control for thirty-three of the last thirty-five years in Florence. Once again, a yes or no vote has no impact on fees, has no impact on taxes. Essentially, it is a decision whether the town and the town council have the ability to maintain local control on expending the revenues that they receive. Some important numbers as part of this. The head of our elections is the town clerk, she's right here, I think many of you know Lisa. Please contact Lisa if you have questions on the election. And secondarily, our town finance director is Gabe Garcia, if you'd like to wave, Gabe. Gabe can answer any questions, and I'm hoping Gabe will stay after the meeting tonight too, if anybody has questions in terms of finance, budgeting, the budget process in Globe. And you can always go to our website, all the budget language, the ballot language, I'm sorry, did I say Globe? Oh, I'm sorry. It's on the town of Florence website, I'm sorry. Well, to be honest with you, all the information's on the Globe website too, because it's required by the state of law, the state of Arizona, and in Casa Grande, and in Coolidge, all this information has to be available on our websites regarding our budget. Please go to the Florence website, you can see the actual ballot language, you can see the actual ballot. This is the point where the clerk usually nudges me and says, let everybody know that it's the first initiative on the ballot, which we were kind of surprised, we thought it would be last, but when we saw the draft ballot, we're actually first on the ballot. There were two other items that are on the ballot. One of them has to do with public safety retirement, the other one has to do with the schools in state land, they'll be on there as well. Important things to come home remembering tonight, votes on these elections will not impact taxes or fees. It's elections to allow for local control. No increases are proposed in overall expenditures from what was approved by the voters last year. We've approved home rule eight of nine times. Are there any questions with respect to the election and the special election? Yes, sir?
The light's on, so I think chances are good.
Dan Hugher, Sun City. I commented last year on this, and I thought the home rule, I think, in my opinion, was defeated because Sun City or Anthem had no clue what that was, and we did not have any public information meetings about it, to the best of my knowledge, I may not have been here. So when you had the special election meeting, you came out here, explained it all to us, I personally have a much better understanding and confidence that this is what we need to do. So in my opinion, and I know you can't make an opinion, but I can, I will again vote for this override election, and unfortunately, it looks like the home rule election, I'm gonna be on vacation, so I don't know if there's an early ballot on that or...
Absolutely. You can request an early ballot.
All right. So, thank you very much.
And please get with Lisa. Anybody who has questions on how you go about that, you request it from the county. Any other questions from anyone in the audience regarding these elections? Thank you very much.
Case, any of you were missing me, I'm back. Two items tonight...
This is Florence, by the way.
Very good, thank you. I have two items for tonight. The first is a memo that I received, or a letter that I received yesterday, as a matter of fact, and it says, "I'd like to thank the individuals that represented the various agencies at the CPR AED 911 program held at Sun City Anthem." Some of the reports received, it looks like we should make this an annual event. It goes on to say a number of things, but I know that Southwest Ambulance participated along with Florence Fire in that exercise, and I'm told that it went very well, so thank you for everybody who participated in that event. It sounds like it was appreciated by the folks who were able to attend. The second item I have is a memo from Dan Hughes, the police chief for the town of Florence, and I want to read it into the record. "Staff of the police department periodically reviews the services we provide to the town of Florence and look for ways to better address the needs and improve overall delivery of services. While reviewing traffic issues for the town, it became clear that for years residents of Florence have become accustomed to parking in various manners that violate Arizona revised statutes in the town of Florence municipal code. Town of Florence over the last several years has begun to grow. The Anthem subdivision is continually building new homes, new streets, and new neighborhoods. With changes in both the downtown area of Florence and the overall growth, it becomes apparent that the safety of residents, for the safety of the residents, the police department should address the issue of parking. Our goal has been to find an avenue to educate the citizens about problems associated with illegal parking and gain compliance through education. The use of citations would be utilized when the education effort has failed. In November of 2015, officers were instructed to address illegal parking issues through education of vehicle owners. The major violations that are prevalent throughout Florence are parking on the wrong side of the street and parking more than eighteen inches from the curb. Each beat, each of the beat sergeants has been working with their officers to find ways to improve or eliminate parking problems in their beats. The next step in our effort is to address illegally parked vehicles by issuing warning notices. Over the next sixty days, officers and police volunteers will attempt to make contact with owners of illegally parked vehicles to correct the problem, or if unable to make contact with the owner, a parking violation notice on the windshield of illegally parked vehicles, we will write "warning" across the notice. As part of the educational process, the department will provide a media release to the local newspaper and place a media release in high-traffic areas throughout our community. A call for service will be generated for each incident of an illegally parked vehicle. The data collected will assist the department in determining how effective officers have been addressing the problem. We will continue to educate drivers on the importance of proper parking. However, at the end of the sixty days, officers will have the discretion to issue parking violation notices when necessary. Most drivers do not realize, to park on the wrong side of the street, they must drive across a lane of oncoming traffic, and that is a violation of the Arizona revised statutes, Title 28 Traffic Code. If their vehicle is involved in an accident while being parked in such a manner, it could be considered contributing factor for the accident." Once again, memo from Chief Dan Hughes. That's all I have.
Remember the council having questions, Grant, his report.
Yes. I went on a tour with one of the staff members downtown last week, and we drove for about maybe twenty minutes, and I would say we probably saw a dozen cars parked illegally. So I'm glad to see that the chief has taken action to remedy this. This is a problem that's not only here in Anthem, but it's all over... This is a problem that's not only here in Anthem, but it's all over town, we've all got laps. We see people park on sidewalks, across the sidewalks, park vehicles out in the street, so I hate to, you know, start finding our friends and neighbors, but it's something that we have to do, and I'm glad to see that you're gonna give warning notes before people park, so, thank you, chief.
Okay, this will be the second call to the public, will the public make comment on what was done tonight, or would you like to... Say no more, I'm not close, call the public, call the council, John.
I have nothing else.
I'd just like to remind everybody, Road to Country Thunder this Saturday, I believe it starts at three in the afternoon, goes till eleven at night, on Main Street in between the Silver King and Legion, and it's free, and they have really good bands there, so I hope you get a good crowd and you got good weather.
Just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. Hopefully, we can do this more often, and when you have any questions, be sure to let us know, either council members or town staff. Thank you again.
Karen took mine as well, however, I'm going to add to it, we do have other speaking engagements planned, so if you know of residents that were unable to attend this evening's meeting, if you go to our town website, we have various speaking engagements posted.
And, last but not least, I go along with Bill, Road to Country Thunder kicking off at three o'clock downtown Main Street, run to eleven o'clock, there'll be country and western music, things for kids to do, bales of hay to sit on, bouncers, if you want to get into bouncing castles with the kids, go ahead. A lot of, we have a good time. We have got over twelve thousand hits on our website about this, so there should be quite a few people we hope come into town. Saturday, April second. So, go try down Main Street after, Brian, what time we're gonna start, about nine o'clock? Where'd he go? About nine o'clock in the morning, we'll start setting the stage up. And remember that what you're seeing out there is some of the monies that was donated to the town by different organizations on the Florence Hundred and Fiftieth Birthday Party. But the majority of the money on that was donated by Country Thunder and Camel Country. So, we have been getting some good sponsors, we're having a good time, make sure everybody you know comes down. Tonight, we hope we were informative. As staff and sitting up here on the council, we can't tell you how to vote, we can do, after the meeting, we can tell you. But, we can suggest, my clerk's shaking her head like that. But we can suggest how you vote, and we would appreciate that. So, with that, again, thank you for coming, and remember, we do have two meetings a month in Town Hall, you're more than welcome to come and see us down there too. Okay, thank you. Need a motion?
Make a motion, would you, John?
We have a motion to second adjourn, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Wait a minute, what are you saying? Okay, Mark said he's gonna be sitting back there. Okay. All in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries, we are adjourned. Good night, folks, thank you for coming.